Thank you.
Oh, oh. Oh. No, 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 it's not a hot like saying here, no, no.
Thanks, sir.
Not at all. No, no, I, I, I remember us just, oh, we had such a hard time with it.
Go ahead.
Well, this is a really two would be two thousand.
Well, Grand Junction and Scott.
All afternoon. Evening, everyone. Like to thank everybody for joining us. I'd like to call this committee the whole on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at one oh, one oh one. Uh, um, we respectfully acknowledge that the land which we are gathered is unceded ter- traditional territory of the Shretnik First Nation. Um, little housekeeping, just again, please ask everybody to, uh, address the chair through the chair and no interruptions and respect your fellow council members and, and, and we'll get this meeting done in a fashion, early, early fashion. Okay, uh, approval of the agenda. Do we have any late items? Dad? No late items. Okay, that's great. Uh, adoption of the, and recommended the, the eating agenda for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three be approved as circulated. Over Ian secondary Bob, all in favor? Carrie? Alrighty, uh, adoption, uh, minutes recommended that the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held on January eleventh, twenty twenty three be adopted. May I have a mover? Pam, secondary Malcolm, thank you. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Alright, business arising, we have Sarah, she's gonna give us, uh, the twenty two using strategy.
Happy. Hold on, I'm just gonna. Sorry, doesn't know me, I'm Sarah Martin, I'm planner with the district and I'm sports staff chief. So the strategy, I left the copy with most. Have a copy there to look at. Um, so strategy consists of the chief statement and two goals. There are six strategies and actions that support the jungle. Some included are is a list of short term actions since that we can start work on almost immediately. As well as we didn't put in the plan. Strategy really focuses on a layered approach, which involves varying multiple strategies. So the process, how did the housing strategy come to be? Uh, so first we started with doing my housing assessment in twenty twenty one and that was delivered to council in January of twenty twenty two. Um, in anticipation of that being delivered, the mayor reinstated our housing committee. And that committee began work by going through a series of workshops examining best practices and studies. Uh, as well as the findings of our housing needs assessment, um, over the course of the spring and early summer of twenty two. Over the summer and early fall, uh, we held public that largely, uh, focused on a survey. And members of the committee and staff went out into the community to raise awareness about of this value of the survey and and have conversations with people. So this was anywhere from, we had a little pop up thing about trying out the code of office company. Another day, uh, we hosted coffee at the hate rooms. Um, we are. Maybe. And then first, um, we have, uh, large employers and. So this week, our vision for sick loops and neighboring communities is to make their residents have access to the payable housing. The sports wellness comes in a variety of housing types and. In the total of all ages, abilities and incomes. Affordable housing is a key level where a community to be socially and economically sustainable and we will work together in a decision. Our vision statement is supported by the rules. The rules are as follows. Provides healthy, safe, comfortable housing. Provide diverse housing types that can accommodate changes in ages and ability of the times. Support a variety of tenure options that even move with seniors, young adult, grown up and family. So our six strategies are also divided up into some strategies and will be a different number for. Our first strategy is creates the conditions to support housing development and the mood barriers. One for the district, this is one that's largely in the district's hands to facilitate the process. Strategy two, seek partnerships and facilitate collaboration. Strategy three, innovation. This strategy considers approaches to housing that are non-traditional and that may not remove. Strategy four, embed wellness in housing. This speaks to our live warm, live well strategy. Strategy five, protect existing housing stock. And strategy six, implementation plan. This, uh, whoops. This can be set out specific action implementation and monitoring. So implementation, implementation is kind of covered off in a few different parts of the strategy. Um, one of them is our short term actions, which we find, uh, near the beginning of the document, it's a table to center strategies. The implementation plan, which is near the back, it's the last strategy. Um, and that implementation plan includes a timeline and contributors acting on these actions. Um, so then examples of how planning the strategy implemented and how this bearing of those. Um, there's a few examples in the document, there's one in housing, one at rental and one at info specifically looking at, uh, indoor dwelling units. So now we're talking about the state. Is our. Right? Forgot the order of the slides. So some actions. So our term actions look at low hanging, which looks at, uh, different, um, projects that could give them, aren't we mentioned as well as, um, actions that can be taken that are relatively straightforward and can be done in a fashion and and implemented this year potentially. The timeframe here for a lot of these is like from immediate to two years. Kind of where this looks at for short term actions. So this looks at things like, you know, where the district has been working on our active transportation network plan. Under parks and trails, uh, one of the, uh, concerns raised by the housing committee was that, you know, in looking at, say, in town line residential town, um, there could be a loss of private open space. So ensuring that there is accessible, high quality, public outdoor space for people is was important to the housing committee. So there's an opportunity there to speak to that in the of those two plans right now. Um, some sort of quick and easy ones, we could look at doing a basic amendment just to increase the density for our low valley residential. So they, instead of just allowing one and a secondary dwelling unit, we could allow two. Uh, and that would be paired with a quick and simple amendment to our new R one zone, which currently allows one secondary dwelling unit and just bump that to two. We could also tweak that to allow duplexes to have their own accessory dwelling units, one. We can have a total density of same. Most of those where there's a duplex, you could have a density of up to four. This is all in line with strategies the province is looking at. So there's a few different things there and and I would encourage look at those. Um, so here's the example I was talking about of how the strategies can be layered to achieve these goals. This one is looking at secondary dwelling units, which is one of our low hanging roots, something we can do right away and and have a big impact on density in our neighborhoods and increasing. Well, um. It also forms an option for seniors aging in place and it's also an opportunity to collaborate with a lot of our seasonal, um, homeowners, spare a home. And perhaps they'd be interested in having a secondary dwelling unit. So somebody on a property monitoring it full time and and that way we also provide another home for someone to live. Um, so how this kind of works, we've got on here, things like which we have the revitalization tax incentive, looking at that by law. Looking at a grant program, pre-approved plans, development cost charges, gentle influence and city bonusing. These are all sub-strategies that you'll find in our others. Our six key strategies, um, and this kind of explains how that would work in this context is how this table. At the end of my presentation, if there are any people back over anything.
I've maybe just talked about the pre-approved plans idea.
For sure. So within the pre-approved plans, the housing committee was pretty passionate about this. Um, and there was actually a fair bit of excitement from, uh, Slay to move, talk to them and they've got a few grants that are rolling out and there's new ones that haven't been announced yet. So there's some potential there for the district to kind of access some funding to meet this. The idea with pre-approved plans is that you purchase a set of plans, perhaps we're going to have different types of buildings. Uh, so in the scenario of, say, secondary dwelling units, we could have a garnish and maybe has a few different exterior looks, for example, for finishing, we could have a coach house. Um, we could also need to look at a plan for an infill house, which would be a principal dwelling unit, but it's designed so that it's, uh, oriented lengthwise down the property instead of across. So most of our homes in our neighborhoods are oriented across the lot. This would go down and that would be part of facilitating uh, subdivision where we could subdivide a normal typical office system to two or three parcels and then have three of these. So we could look at plans for that. For example, as well. So they would be pre-reviewed in terms of form and character. Um, technically we're moving into the realm of an intensive development permanent area and we really want to remove red tape. So if we can do these pre-approved plans or pre-looked at in terms of former characters and then also pre-reviewed and pre-signed off by the billing inspector, they're signed. So they're ready to go. Um, so all someone would need to do, these plans would be accessible potentially for fee, depending on who it depends on, uh, licensing with whomever provides those plans to the district. Um, they would need to access a copy of that, provide us with a site plan, address things like citing setbacks and parking. That's it. And it's basically with that citing from that. Section. So it becomes a lot quicker. Live that way, for example.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody have any questions, uh, in discussion for Sarah? There, Malcolm?
Well, uh, this package was distributed in our agenda Friday afternoon. Um, I hope council has had a chance to read it. The sooner we get on this better. So, uh, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the council, do we have a resolution ready or anything? No?
Not at this time, not for the committee.
Alright, you can't do it in the committee. Okay, sorry. Um, can we bring this forward to, uh, our council meeting this evening for a resolution?
I think, uh, I mean, everybody's comfortable with it. Everybody feels good about it and, um, staff has answered all the questions. You could bring it to, uh, I don't know, Kelly, is that, would that be alright tonight or is it too quick?
It's fine. It'll be a late item. We, the, I think when it was talked about, the housing commit, uh, housing committee. We were gonna have a robust discussion about it here today. Talk about what action items we wanted to prioritize or like I remember there's discussion about like, do we want to talk about specific action items that we wanted to do out of this strategy? That we could have a clearer resolution, um, at our next council meeting or we can bring it as a late item to this council meeting. I'm fine with what, whatever.
I think.
Good.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my thought was it's just a high level of endorsing document. Council endorses the document and supports it being embedded in her O C P and then and then leave it to staff to, um, digest the document and come back to council with recommendations of, um, early invitations, uh, strategies, low hanging fruit, if you will. So my thought was bring it to council this afternoon. Uh, just for council to endorse the document, support it. And, uh, possibly, uh, support it being embedded in an official community plan. And then, and then leave it to, uh, council to come back to, to come back to a, a council meeting with recommendations other than the document, what they feel is usable. And then timelines around it.
Hey, thank you, Malcolm. Alright, go ahead there, councilman.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it would be good to have a discussion here now and then put it on the next council agenda. So the public knows about it as well that we're gonna be passing and endorsing it. It's just rather than trying to not have that public notice period, I, I'd feel more comfortable than doing it that way, Mr. Chair.
Hey, anybody else have any discussion? Pam, go ahead.
To the chair, um, yeah, I, I think, uh, I think it's awesome. Thank you, Sarah, and everybody who's worked on this. It, it it's, uh, very well done and very well presented and I think it's gonna be great to have, have it to work with. Um, but Ian's point, well taken. If we, um, rush through this too fast, we need to give the community a chance to, uh, I think, uh, come up to speed on, on what's been done as well. And I don't know, maybe that's what you're thinking by moving forward, uh, to the meeting tonight, but.
Okay, thank you, Pam. And councilman, okay?
Thank you to the chair. You know, this is a ten month process from the housing committee. Bringing this forward in this, including this forum for council's endorsement. So part of that ten month process, if you can bring this up to of all the consultation that was done with the public to incorporate into this document. This document is a representation of lots of other consultation and input. This, this represents all the consultation done over a ten month period. So I don't think it'd be any surprise to anybody in town, you know, community who's concerned with housing because they've already had a chance for input in its action and document. So I think, I think we just need to get on with it. I, I, I agree a hundred percent with transparency and public consultation. This document represents a lot of consultation. If, Chair, if you could explain all the different engagements we did with the public to achieve this.
Chair. Yes. So, yeah, we did do a number of pop-ups, like I said, um, where we were, you know, trying to flag people down as they went by, um, uh, you know, for a static displays against seniors center for these. Um, equal hours, sports society, built have posters up everywhere as well, everywhere that would allow us to put it up. So there was always one at the post office, for example. Um, hi doctors, one of the I D A. All around town, we had Camden go around and put these up for us. Um, and there were also surveys available there as well. So we did receive a lot of surveys that came in as paper documents. And those were from these other sites around town. We're also at the farmer's market as well. Um, we had committee members that were there handing these surveys out and spreading the word with a booth there too. So, yeah.
Hey, thanks, Sarah. Uh, go ahead, Council Evans.
Thank you through the chair. I, yeah, you guys were everywhere and this is an excellent document and it's very exciting. I mean, get on with it. I, I'd be willing to vote tonight on a yes, if that's what the rest of the council want.
No, um, so sorry, Sean, uh, Rich, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Um, thank you, Sarah and Scott for all the hard work and love that went into this. We've spent eleven months together putting this document together. I am, uh, gonna lean towards, we revisited in two weeks that maybe we talk about it tonight. Um, I think it's, um, a pretty powerful document and I think people just need to maybe, uh, if, if we give them a little time to chew on it, I, I don't think that there's gonna be a lot of pushback. What I think it is, is that we do need to give people space to think about it. And maybe because we've been looking at it and talking about it for so long, we feel pretty comfortable. Um, but I really feel like these are one of the, this is a huge concern for Canada, B C and Sicamous. Um, and, and that we need to just, if we put it out two weeks, uh, that's not gonna make a whole lot of difference. In my opinion, I feel like that's what we should be doing on this one.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Rich. Um, Council McKay, just a general discussion here. Would it be okay with you to just report on it tonight in your, in your, cause it's, you know, it's part of your portfolio? And, uh, and then recommend that we're gonna, we're gonna be passing this in two weeks and let the public know, you know, that we're gonna be passing this in two weeks. Would you feel comfortable with that?
Uh, anything except me discussing a document. Sarah with herself, Corey, this is support, staff supporting me. Uh, Sarah and Scott did the line share the work on this. I mean, they incorporated the public's ideas and, and, um, the community's ideas and they've got it made of a nice chronological order. It's, it's, they don't need you, it's an easy read. So, no, I, I, I support, uh, Council Rich's proposal. Give, give staff a chance to look over the document or closer give council a chance, but maybe to order on the next council's agenda as for, for a resolution to uh, endorse the document and and adopt it into, embedded into our O C P as, as the higher intent. And then hand it back to staff to come up with an action plan out of the document in the future news. So I'm, I'm fine with that, sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Council McKay. Yeah, I think it's, uh, we have a, the, the agenda tonight and, uh, but for sure, we'll get it on the agenda for the next, uh, next council meeting and we'll get, uh, get this passed and it's, uh, it's a great document. You guys spent a lot of work on it. And I, I know council really appreciates it and the community needs it so badly. So, thank you.
I'm just asking a question on the document. Sorry, I'm, I feel like I'm asking way too many questions today, but whatever, I'm just gonna go with it. Um, so there's a, there's a portion in here, one of the recommendations is to work with at the M R D T tax. And I know that was a recent thing that they put in to allow that. What sort of, and maybe you guys have thought this through a little bit more, or maybe it's just a part of the thought start. Is, would you envision kind of increasing that tax? Because we're currently at two percent, we're allowed to go up to three percent on, 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 on a tax basis. Um, was there any kind of consideration or thought around that?
Okay, go.
Chair, uh, so how the M R D T works is, so we currently are at two percent and that only funds type programs. In order to, uh, to rep some of that money towards housing, you have to bump it up to three percent. And that's only going to happen if we get support from our short term rental operators and our hotel operators. So all these recommendations are basically recommendations for further work and investigation. Not all of them are in the end necessarily going to be implemented, right? Uh, which is why we want a layered approach. So this one, it really, uh, rides off whether or not there's support from the industry to bump it to three percent. The other thing is that that one, we only get one percent for housing, the two percent still goes towards tour. Uh, we have to have a project that that money is. So I know there was some talk at the committee wanting to make sure we nailed that project down before we approached, um, the industry, this is a feeling of support, feeling that there might be more to where the, where the money was actually.
Good question there, Ian, and thanks, uh, Kelly.
Yeah, and that is a good question and we have talked about. And then further to that, so we have a M R D T goes in a five year cycle, so we have it till twenty twenty four. So in order, we would wanna redo it then and throw in the three percent, cause we need all the hoteliers' approval to recall through that cycle again. So I think we could get our ducks in a row and line it up for that time.
Yeah.
Correct identify project and then try to get the hoteliers buy in at that time.
Okay, thank you, Council McKay.
Yeah, basically a repeat of what Sarah and Kelly and mean that it's, it's just an idea, right? And, and it has to follow a process. It has to be uh, that one percent has to be approved by council and has to be identified for project. Some sort of a for housing project, I think, to put out the expression of interest for maybe, um, the print in the main street or seventeen, four twenty five. Um, it has to be earmarked for a project. Has to be something that the, the public can support and buy into and the hoteliers and the service industry agree to and sign off on. It, it, it may, it may not go anywhere. It's just an action item to look into and it takes, it'll take a lot of levels of support from council. Uh, or from staff, support from the service industry. And you'd have to identify a, a, a specific project that that money is earmarked for too. So it's if, you know, we have a line item in our budget for housing right now, we'd add one more if we had the M R D T tax and, and specific to that. Just, just one of lay, many layered ideas.
Thank you, Council McKay. Well, that's good, sir. Anything else to add? One more, one more, Ian?
Well, yeah, what? I gotta stop doing this, but no, I, I, I actually think this item does deserve discussion and that's, that's why we're, you know, kinda here. So maybe I'll just keep it going a little bit longer. Um, is, you know, you've done a lot of work, really good. I, I've, I've read most of it. I won't say I've read every single granular detail in it. Out of all of this, since, I mean, I directed to committee members or, you know, the staff as well, out of all this, what do you think? Maybe the one or two things we should be focusing on immediately to get the most bang. You know, out of, ob- obviously, housing is this ongoing issue, but it's, you know, you know, it takes time to build, it takes time to encourage all these things, but kind of in your opinion, what, what is the, what is the number one or two things that we could be doing?
Council McKay.
Well, I, I think, thank you for the question. It, it's a layer to the post, so it will take a couple of things to make one thing happen, sort of thing. Um, if we change our, our, our zoning to allow two dwellings or one dwelling for each, if it's a duplex. That, that's left to the private sector to pursue and it doesn't incur any costs to the district. And then on top of that layer, if we were to have, uh, the drawings to get a grant application through, uh, C M H C, Kenmore Housing. And maybe get a grant application to our contractor to have four construction drawings with different format characters on the outside. Or either cottage suite or separate subdivided lot. Uh, I think those two things combined could be done very quickly and at minimal expense, we were to get a grant from the district. But if it's a layer, it is, it would take a couple of things to happen to make. So I guess the short answer is infill. Infill is the quick, quick, easy one. And to do that, we would amend our bylaw one thousand to allow two dwellings. And, uh, the grant application, they have some drawings. Corner was an example. They had a competition a while ago through an R F P. They come up with what they call a complex. And we just go up to front desk and say, yeah, I want one of those drawings. And there's standpoint construction. You just have to make sure your, your setbacks are proper in your lot. Possibly, uh, subdivide in, in another layer to, uh, fast track the subdivision process if, if, if that's required. So I think the quick fix out of this document is, is infill. But it's also a bit of a layered approach to do that.
Good question, really good question, Ian. Thanks, uh, Council McKay, uh, Council Rich.
Thank you to the chair. Um, I, I think we're already on it. So being, um, I think what Mel said, we've got, so, but we have properties identified already where we're working with partners to, um, get housing into Sicamous and, and that's pretty close to, you know, it's moving forward. Um, and there are meetings happening every week, Kelly. Um, uh, so I think that's happening where we're going to get obtainable housing sooner than later. Um, and as Council McKay said, um, making it easier for people to put in, um, two suites, you know, if we go amend by law one thousand, which we just started, but we've already amended where we can do carriage houses and we are, are, you know, we know that our sewer system and our water system can support in the tree streets. Having those secondary suites and encouraging people to put those in and that's already kind of in the making. Um, and then moving forward, I think it is that it, it's two suites instead of one. Um, and, and, you know, giving uh, people opportunity to have those secondary suites. So giving them the sell that, you know, that's your mortgage helper or that's your retirement home. So I, I, I really feel like it actually is in the process. Um, and then just keep moving forward as per the document, like we've identified a lot of things, but honestly, w- we. But honestly, we've done a lot moving, like it's rolling.
Great, thanks. Council Rich, Council Beach?
To the chair, thank you. I just, I do remember, I did read this all through and I do remember a discussion in that meeting about some incentives that the district can also provide to encourage people to consider these new housing options, not only the plans. I do believe that there were some, there were some financial supports or forgivances or deduction of costs that would be, would support people taking on projects. Is that something that is considered low hanging?
It's, I think that's, I think that is doable and Scott maybe can elaborate or Sarah can elaborate a little more on that. Like a tax incentive for some housing projects?
Through the chair. Uh, yeah, so my last slide, I was looking at the, the short term, sorry. Some of the short-term goals with the infill housing, specifically the secondary dwelling units. It, there was a number of things in there. So like doing this, updating our revitalization tax incentive bylaw, which is something that's already under review. But we can build in some incentives there for this. So like, if you're familiar with that bylaw, there are some exemptions from taxes and they slowly go up over a period of, say, five to 10 years. We could do something similar with, you know, these new units that people put on their property. So their property taxes wouldn't go up dramatically the first few years and would allow them to pay it off. Another one was, you know, looking at offering a grant where, you know, if you're, if you're willing to enter into a, say, like a five-year housing agreement so that that unit is specifically for residential use for a tenant. That you would then gain access to a grant that would basically be the equivalent of the development cost charges. So when you go to apply for billing permit and you pick that thing up, there's these thousands of dollars that you owe in development cost charges. And that's, and that's for providing public services, like any upgrades to the water, the sewer, the street. So that grant would then basically be the equivalent of that. And that would be one way of ensuring that we're still getting the money that we need to maintain those essential services without putting that burden on, on someone who's looking to turn it by housing.
But that grant money, we'd have to set up a fund and we'd have to get that money. When people develop, new developers, when that might be an additional fee that we may charge to go into a housing fund. So somebody's gotta pay for it at the end of the day, right? But it's a way to encourage that, yeah.
Thank you, Kelly. Can you, we, we don't usually take, take questions from the forum. You have an open session at the end and you get to, we'll give you the thumbs up and thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Kelly. Ian?
Just, just one more. I, I promise this will be my last. But, you know, one of, one of the, one of the things that I think a lot of towns and cities have looked at, and I, I think you, we're touching on it here, is what we can actually control in terms of our regulation to kind of get out of the way to spur it. And I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the sweet spot is a combination of incentives and lowering the regulation and permitting basis. Is that something, right, okay, all right. So I guess in that vein, we are going through finance today. And we went through the operations side of stuff. Is some of these ideas that are in this report coming back in a financial implication as part of our budget process? I know you alluded to it this morning, Council. So.
Yeah, I think, well, Kelly, you can answer that one?
Um, yeah, so we, we do have a placeholder. It's not a very large one. Maybe you could get us some plans, right? Maybe it could purchase us some plans, but this is where the recommendations out of this, staff will look at it and, and work with council, determine which ones we're gonna tick off this year, which ones we're gonna tick off that year and what are the financial impacts of those and make sure they're properly embedded in our financial plan. A lot of them is staff time. We're already here. Even the tax accent incentive, that's staff time to redo a bylaw, the OCP amendments. I mean, so a lot of this is absorbed within our, our regular stage. But yes, we'll make sure if there's specific line items that have a dollar value assigned to them, that they're captured in the budget accordingly.
Great, thanks, Kelly.
Yeah, and, and I, just as we're talking about this, I ju, I just had some questions as well. I think housing is extremely important. Wondering if we're gonna add these bonus densities, potentially three to a single-family dwelling. Are we gonna put any restrictions that they have to be long-term rented versus short-term rentals? Because I can see people using that as an ability to provide two short-term rental suites and a housing. Like, I don't know, would there be restrictions around that?
Very good. Have you thought about that?
Through the chair, yeah, we have concerned that. And obviously, like, it would be subject to what council thinks is important. As well as, you know, our, our public hearing kind of period that would be associated with those. Had to get feedback on that. You know, and certainly, you know, council feels they want more time dedicated to consultation on that, then, you know, we can hold public information ahead of something like that.
Thank you, sir. Council McKay?
So a tool for that is called a housing agreement. It's, it's a binding contract that's transferable on title. So a person can buy a house with the intent of putting that, another house on it and then, and then flipping both houses. So a housing agreement is something that they would enter into with the district. And then if they sign off on a housing agreement for five, 10, 15, 20 years, whatever it is, that stays on title as a covenant and even, even if the title transfers to a different name. Once you enter into a housing agreement, then, then the district could consider some of the other layered options in the document about reducing the development permit cost or, or removing it. Capping into existing line, a T instead of a separate line off of, off of the main street or off of the street, tapping into what you already have. Options like that, the, the tax incentives to be spread over five or 10 years, you know, lower it, and then, or something like five or 10 years or whatever. But the key is, we don't wanna be taken advantage. We wanna meet the intent of what we're trying to do is increase housing. And so there's ways to avoid short, short-term housing, short-term rentals by using a housing agreement, which is registered on title and stays at even when titles transfer.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Council McKay. Anybody else have any questions? Is there all good questions and good concerns too? So, Kelly, you have?
I just have one more, and I don't know if the housing committee considered this. Just in terms of streamlining process, in terms of the development on a larger scale of medium or high-density rental units. If it's, if something's in our OCP for higher, medium residential and it's not zoned that, have we considered not requiring a rezone, rezone of those properties? Just if it's, if it's, if it's consistent with the OCP, don't require a rezone?
Through the chair. Um, so this is actually an idea that the province is talking about implementing anyway and just totally like making it like you don't need permits, like, I shouldn't say any permits. Basically, removing these forming character requirements and zoning. So it is certainly something that council can consider doing. We did ask this question as part of our survey to see if there was public support for that, and there was. There's a lot of support. So there's a lot of support for some pretty wild ideas that we had that are not so wild. They're at the forefront of current planning, thought and best practice. They're not out of nowhere. But, but they would require a bit more, I think, public consultation and like a bigger process to do. So that's why we've been talking about this low-hanging fruit that are just really minor, small things that can be implemented right away. They don't have a bigger impact. And then some of these really big changes, like say waving zoning if the OCP supports it. Going beyond that would be make, setting up our OCP so that it facilitates that by expanding our medium-density land use designation. So where that designation currently sits, most of that's already developed and it's not older development that's ripe for redevelopment. It's in good condition. So it's very unlikely that areas are going to end up supporting the bulk of any new higher-density housing. So what we would be looking at in a larger process would be replacing a lot of our low-density land use designation, maybe just leaving it in the hazard areas because you don't really wanna put more people in hazard areas. But and then that would be something you'd have to consider. Do you wanna wave the zone part where in place and, and, you know, the problem here?
Great, thank you, Sarah and Kelly for those questions.
Sorry, Council Bailey? Sorry, I lied. I, I just have one more. And just because I, back in my earlier days, I, I lived in Ottawa and we actually for time, I rented in this place that where there was a mix between market housing and then housing that had, you couldn't sell it. You could sell it for just the, the extra inflation kind of upgrade, right? But, you know, they technically owned the home, nobody would be moved out. And then it kind of gets me to thinking that we have a lot of surface lots around here, like we were talking about Finlayson this morning and going, well, what would we possibly do with it? Well, the parking lot's really big. Doesn't mean that you can't still have a parking underneath and build housing on top of it. And once you start taking land costs out, then you can start getting to something that's plausible in terms of being attainable for it. So maybe did, was that part of kind of, kind of the discussions?
Thank you to the chair. I was gonna say Sarah can talk, speak to this, but absolutely, we've looked at different co-ops. Camlips does exactly that plan where they have their apartments at Stratas where you buy in, but you can't, you, you sell it at the increased value, but you're not at cost. So you're not making a, a lot of money. And, and we've spent a lot of time, Sarah's spent a lot of time looking into that. Co-ops are a passion mine, so. Yeah, it's absolutely something that we're looking at. And, and Sarah's spent a lot of time and Scott identifying different properties within Sycamore's that we either own now or that we could potentially buy. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, what we do is we provide the land and then people buy the housing on top. So it, it's kind of a different approach. So people don't have to come in at, at $500,000 or $600,000 to own a home. Maybe in today's day and age, maybe they come in at, at $300,000 or $400,000. So, so, so it's a community building. Sarah, maybe you can, you know more than I do. Thank you.
So there's a couple of models. There's a co-op model which has been around for a long time and it's still a really valuable model that has a lot of interest in it. Especially locally, there's a lot of interest in doing that. Another way of doing it, so say if you don't have a co-op that can take care of management of properties, can do this other model, which is referred to as affordable in perpetuity, where the district or somebody who wants to leave something behind in the morrow, land, it's put into a community land trust. And so there are a number of them. There's one in DC that takes this land on and manages it, that a lot of other local governments have been seeing, especially recently. So the land is taken out of the equation. You don't own the land. And so then you can, you can build a house on top of it. The other way that it would happen is you would have a co-op that would build housing on it. And then, you know, people buy into the co-op at whatever they have. But they get assigned a unit based on their, not based on what their financial capabilities are. And the, the great thing about co-op is that, you know, as you go through life stages, you can cycle through different units. And they don't have to be in one location. They can be spread out through a community, these different sites, and they can be different types. They could be a micro-op, which is like a, kind of like a small condo sort of idea, for example. They can look like a normal neighborhood. It can be a combination of, you know, where you've got apartment buildings and townhouses and single-family infill homes. They're really exciting and really neat. And there's, there's a lot of passion for this idea, for sure.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Council Rich. Anything else? Anybody, everybody else good with that? Okay, look forward to seeing that on the agenda in a couple of weeks. Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Well, just one, thank you guys for all the work and all your, your committee members and everything. You guys did a lot of work on that. That's a long time coming. Thank you. Yeah, we'll move forward. Next one is development service update. Scott's gonna give us a, an update on development services.
And thank you, Chair. So this is on the screen now is our comparison of 2021 and 2022 building permits. I think we're gonna try and present these quarterly this year. So this is just the summary of, of 2022. And then each quarter we'll, we'll send them to council. So as you can see, the, it actually looks pretty much the same 21, 2021, 2022. Really, same number of permits and, and the construction value isn't that far off. I guess if you're looking at housing units provided, so single-family dwellings would be one area, you can see where the new units were added. And then the other one is moving demolition. And the moving permits are generally people moving in mobile units. So we actually saw quite a few permits come in that way. But any questions I can answer them?
Looks really good. There's Scott. Any discussion? Anybody have any questions for Scott? Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. I didn't have a question. I just wanna, I wanted to make a comment in comparison. I talked to the CEO of Enderby. And their building permit value for 2022 is about $5 million. So, I mean, ours is, is triple that this year. So hopefully it continues. I don't know with the cost of mori and the cost of goods. It, it's probably gonna slow down, but we'll see how the future looks.
Good comparison. Thank you very much, Kelly. Well, thank you very much, Scott. That was, that's, that's, I like those comparisons. It's really good. Anything else?
I just have a couple more slides. One is the, and there's the, the 2022 December 2022, building permit stats. They're all incorporated in the previous one.
Okay.
And the next one is just the planning and development application summary. Just comparing 21, 21, 2022. So a few, you know, 61 in 2021 and 55 in 2022. And everything looks to be about the same. We have a nice little chart that shows the, the breakdown of them. Yeah, pretty, pretty steady between 2021 and 2022. And the next one is the inquiry. So the planning and development inquiry summary. This one looks a little bit different. So in 2021, we fielded 440 inquiries. And 2022, 653 inquiries. So that's almost 200 more inquiries or more than 200 more inquiries. And then they're just broken down to the different types of inquiries. It's not real scientific breakdown. We kinda everybody logs their inquiries as they do them. And then we just tried to, to put them in a category. As heat short-term rentals went up quite a bit, it was a hot topic in 2022. So we had 140 more inquiries on short-term rentals. And then it's depending on how, how long they take. So sometimes one could take five minutes. But sometimes they could turn into hours of work if someone's asking, you know, maybe it's research on a property, they're looking for past permits and other levels of government, what, what permits have been applied for, for those properties. Some of them lead to applications and then some of them don't lead to applications. So I'd say probably it's easy to say half an hour is spent on average on some of these. But yeah, we, usually they're broken up between Sarah, Steffi and myself. The girls at the front kinda field the phone calls and send them up and, and it's a team effort to, to get them answered. Last one. We just have the bylaw enforcement summary for 2022. I thought we, we might have had the, the dollar values for the ticketing, but we don't, we just have the numbers. So 720 tickets were, were issued in 2022, probably helped. We had a little bit of help from a summer student or, over the summer. And, and then you can see just the complaint files, files open, file closed. Some of them go on for a while, some of them lead to ticketing or other actions. But most times we try to address those and work towards plans without, without getting taking up a level of enforcement or anything.
Really good, Scott. A lot more information than we, we see in the planning, you know, the planning and development. And I, I like, I like your format. It's good. Council Bailey?
I guess this would be the right time to ask. It's more of a question about a specific property that has a that's partially demolished, the secret garden. Could you let us know anything about that?
Well, to the chair, as far as I know, they're still waiting for that, the PC Hydro to come through. Well, to the chair, as far as I know, they're still waiting for that, the BC Hydro to come through so they can, they can complete the demo.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, my understanding, I think that unless it's, unless I'm missing something, I see the wires are cut on, on that building. I, I just wonder if we could be following up on that because I think we, we gave, also gave a sufficient amount of time for that to get done. And then half of it's still there. So I mean, I guess if we could confirm if the hydro's off, it's down, it's been down pretty, pretty quickly.
Thank you, Counsel Bailey. Yeah, the hydro was disconnected and John Braun was here at the planning meeting last week and he did say that we're gonna start on it fairly quickly.
Well, moving it maybe.
But the hydro is down. Counsel McCain?
Yeah, it's more of a salvage than a demolition. So it's piece by piece by piece. And I thought staff give or council give an extension to April 1st, I think it is. So it was originally December 31st, I believe. And I think at their last council meeting, we gave an extension to April 1st. So not really breaking any rules. So it looks pretty ugly and they're going pretty slow, but. I agree with Counsel Ian, you know, let's try priding along because it is an ice war.
Thank you, Counsel McCain.
Through the chair, thank you. Scott, with 720 tickets total, and I know you didn't have a dollar amount, but do we know what a percentage of those that actually get paid?
Yeah, I could look into that. I have a very high percentage do get paid. We do send, end up sending some to collections if they're not paid. It's kind of almost a loss when we send them to collections, but I guess it sends the message that, yeah, that you should pay your tickets in Sycamore's. I've had, I did speak to some people and they're like, I didn't even know you guys issued tickets. How did I get one? Like they're forgetting them. So just it, you know, you could consider it a notice and and now I'll get you a number of, of a dollar value.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Good question, Counsel Rich. Yeah, John's been busy. Okay, that's good. Anybody else have any more questions for Scott? Okay, right along. Okay, we're gonna move into rat abatement measures. Daryl, you're up. We got a nice
PowerPoint.
For you, you got to go on there. We always like Daryl's PowerPoints. Thank you.
You're right. Yes, the perfect segue. The law and the progressive animal responses are all rats. So actually they weren't. Hey, so I just thought about some information together because there's been some comments and some questions as to what we're dealing with and what we're doing about it. What we're seeing on the field. So let's go on. Start by turning it off. There we go. Okay, so I guess just before I play this short little clip that was on, I believe it was on global news. I will say in the past number of years, the rat complaints have been kind of filtered to public works. As of late, since John came on board, he's been responding in person and doing a bit of investigation as he goes out to each site. So historically, we get the odd complaint. I didn't quantify them. Really kept track. There weren't that many, maybe a couple a year on the high end, some years any. But we did get some traps in and they were baited traps and they they were filled with an attractant that was one of three different rodenticides that you could use. So we kind of altered to see what would work best. So of late, those are no longer allowed for us to be passing out and to be using. So I'll see if I can get this to play with the click.
I can, yeah, I have the power.
This is just a couple of minutes. Okay, so I thought I would share that is to kind of show that you know, the rat problems endemic to all of the all the interior, basically. I thought I would put a few slides together. We could talk about what the cause of the problem is. And what are our options going forward with this?
Sorry. It's playing in the background.
Okay, so the big one is the food and shelter, as she mentioned on the, on the article. Garbage compost, fallen fruit. She told, talked about dendris or whatever the term she used for the rotting fruit. Pet, pet food, some of the research I was reading, bird feeders. And obviously water sources. So kind of talking about quick wins today in different areas. This, this per rat, I guess would be stuff we want to get this education out to people so they can start cleaning up their yards and looking at some of these sources. And then, of course, the shelter aspect. If we can inform people on, you know, where they're gonna be hiding, what they're looking for. I think we start tightening things up and make people aware. It's, it's, it's probably as good a step as, hey. Did make some calls and you know, neighbors in the area are basically just providing education, whether that's, you know, we've had some that are really hands-off and they get a call, they'll just say phone interior health. But it does direct the public to to finding some education along the way. For us, we've had some, some calls, as, as I mentioned, over the years, we've had a few. We've got some education in place that passed out something that John's armed with when he goes to visit. And we do have a bylaw place as well that's, you know, kind of centers around the good neighbor stuff. So he's had to make a couple of repeat visits when there's problematic areas. And it seems to be working fairly well. And I kind of looked at our program. I think there's some quick wins we could probably implement fairly easily. One is the website. We do have some good information on our website, but it took me five clicks to get to it. So I think you know, we might want to look at the way where we can streamline that and get that information more front and center. I think could be a quick win. We could look at some complete timed information campaigns. But to broaden the messages, get a little more proactive. And then, you know, there's the other side of it. If we want to get more restrictive, there's, there's there's some measures we could take, a little more effort. We could start implementing some regulations around certain things. We weren't having success with the education. So just at a high level, you know, looking at what's happening and what we're doing now and how we can improve. I would, I would recommend, and this is really just for counsel's information today. I would recommend that, you know, maybe I work with Sarah on some messaging and, you know, Scott and John, maybe through bylaw, we see what we can do to maybe just beef it up a little bit. I'm locked up.
Here, try it now.
Okay. Yeah. Scott had a great idea. I don't know. You have a boy, the teenager's going after them now.
Thanks for that presentation, Daryl. Thank you for that, Scott. That's a great offer. You're gonna offer up. That's great. Anybody have any discussion? Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Thank you to the chair. One thing we didn't touch on there is feral cats in Sycamore's. So we have a huge feral cat population in Sycamore's. One of the organizations I worked with last year in Sycamore's, we trap neutered and released over 170 cats back into the community. So that have been trapped here, we removed over 400 kittens. So the feral cats actually, and where the populations are in town, there actually isn't that many rats. So, and I know bylaws and animals become, we absolutely need people to spade neuter their animals. But the cats actually are a really good first, like the frontline going into there. And then my second point would be, is this something where we could get Brett, if we're having the students this year doing the fire, going around to people's houses and, and talking about how to keep brushing stuff back for your house, that that's maybe something that that's a secondary type of information that they can pass on to residents saying, you know, here, you know, not only is your house not gonna burn down, but we can help you with your, your rats. I don't know.
Thank you very much, Counsel Rich. Okay, Daryl has a recommendation here for us. That recommendation that the committee, the whole receive for information. The process is currently being employed by the District of Sycamore's with regard to rat abatement. So you know, basically you guys are, you know, doing a good job, you know. So can I have a motion for that? Counsel Bailey and Second Counsel Beach, any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I really like the feral cat idea. I mean, I, I think I'm literally thinking about putting a little cat house up in my parking lot, just to because I can't stand mice and rats. So the more that die, the better. But, you know, I I think there's also maybe one of the things we can add to the motion. I sent, I sent Daryl something today. There is some really good new kind of technologies out in the market that you might be able to use just to get a sense of the numbers and stuff. I don't know. You have to see if it makes work, like if it makes sense to do. But I think it's just something that we have to stay ahead of. I mean, I know obviously Vancouver is like, they just have a horrible problem. And if we, obviously they're here in Sycamore's, but if we can just kind of stay on par with them and keep, keep the population down, then I think our goal needs to be not to, I, I think we have to avoid the really bad outbreaks and try to employ a whole bunch of different strategies. So I, I think you're definitely on the right track and I appreciate staff's time on, on this issue.
Thank you, Counsel Bailey. Counsel Beach?
Thank you to the chair. I just, no one has talked about composting in backyards, which does happen all the time. And it doesn't seem to really matter how cleverly you try to contain it. They'll come up from underneath, they'll chew their way in from anywhere. So I'm I'm wondering if, you know, this is the beginning of starting to think about pickup or some kind of collection program for composting for people. And maybe their numbers aren't great enough. And I know that an assessment was done by the CSRD at one point and people are very supportive. But maybe as the rat population grows, that will change. It's something to talk about.
Good point, good point, Counsel Beach. I think, Daryl, you could probably look into that for us. And I think you know, education is probably really the key thing. And I know why, this is a great information sheet, but even what you showed on the, the foods and all that stuff that get out there, we can get that front and center. And you know, maybe the backside of this could be something, you know, also used for education. And I think you're, you guys are doing a great job. Okay, go ahead, Daryl.
To the chair. I guess the bright side and silver lining to all of this, what I from the Kelowna area is they estimate 80% die in the winter. And I know the blast we got this year, you know, and we're a little colder in the winter. Maybe it's in the nineties here. So I think I think that helps reset things every year. I really I'm confident if we had a good education program out there, people knew not to leave stuff laying around and to buy things out.
Great, thank you, Daryl. Counsel Evans?
Yeah, thanks to the chair. And I just went to our website and just clicked the magnifying glass, typed in the word rats, and there was the measures. But it's, it's quite easy to find if people are interested. And there's a big cold snap coming this weekend, so let's hope.
Great. Any more discussion? Call the question?
Sorry, I just wanted to note through the chair that on our webpage as well, which was a fairly new webpage, that we have other species on there as well. So it's urban wildlife in Sycamore's. So rats, we talk about prevention methods, control measures and tips. And then there's resources to help like these getting rid of rodents, rats and mice and wild safe BC information about rats as well. So on other urban wildlife. And we may look at, you know, having a a better location for it. Sorry, if you want to bring it up, it's under your municipality. Bylaws and bylaw enforcement and then drop down urban wildlife. And so, you know, it might not be the right location for it, but we do have information available.
Thank you, Sarah. Good information. All right, that's it. All, all, call the question. All those in favor? Very unanimously, thank you. All right, moving right along. Health reports. Do you have anything they want to add? No? Okay. Well, that's good. Well, now we're moving on to public input. I think we have some people out there that might want to say the odd word. Could you go ahead and just state your name and your, your address or anything like that? Or just name? Just name, yep.
My name's Liam. But I just moved to the area last April and the issue of housing has come up with us. I'm afraid that I got to have to this meeting because it's basically all the problems that I've encountered. For indoor responses, I don't think Counsel.
Ian.
Ian.
Yep.
Um, if you want to quick bank your bucket, an issue that I need help with is for a secondary suite on my property, the basement was not developed, but it's a split level. Is the top half of the house is 1300 square foot and measures mirrors basement as well, 1300 square foot. And in the bylaw says you can only have maximum 90 square meters, which comes down to like 950 square feet for secondary housing. So I don't know why that's there. It doesn't make sense. I know it was in line with the BC building code. I have a way back one, but BC BC building codes changed and they erased that and have now changed it to an limited square footage for secondary housing. So for me, that would be really awful. Doesn't make any sense to have a tenant down there and just take away 300 square feet from them. Living storage, that makes sense, I think. And the second issue that pertains to me specifically, I don't know other proposals you have here that my house has a blood plane components on it, but I am not Sycamore's is this blood plane mapping for the two provincial, two, 200 year provincial plan. So I am technically not allowed to build a secondary suite on a home that has a basic suite that I built that I damaged concrete. Because my house has that blood plane components on it, even though it's not a because my house has that floodplain complex on it, even though it's not on the floodplain. So I'm not sure if anyone has any solutions or however you know, we are in a I can't provide immediate housing. And I did have the finance to build down there. But because of because of that paperwork, I was not allowed to.
Thanks, Liam, for bringing that up to our attention. I don't know if we want to address it now or do you want to meet with Scott later? But
I just want to touch on the floodplain.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I just want to touch on the floodplain because I own restaurants and we can't get insurance because technically a lot of insurance companies say the entire area of Sycamore is in that potential floodplain. It just it comes down to some of their determinations of risk. So I mean, on the floodplain, but I think to your point about regulations, it's it's good that you were here to listen to the housing committee for, because that's one of the things that I think we can identify as we work through it, how to you know, take those regulations that we control and make sure they make sense that is enabling people. So I think that was a really good point there.
Thank you, Counselor Bailey. Scott, like to add to that?
Yeah, I guess the floodplain issue, yeah, I mean all of Sycamore is essentially on the floodplain anywhere that's flat. It's it's floodplain. The covenant was probably either put on at the time of the subdivision or the time the original house was built. They identified typically three fifty one as being the the floodplain and and everything blowback shouldn't be damaged by floodwaters. It is possible to have that covenant removed, so we could work with you on that. Have you applied for building permit?
I applied for the building permit and Kenny, I think his name is. I don't even think he looked at it. He just saw a floodplain company and said, you got to go to this website. You got to contact an engineer. My fiance and I email blasted every single engineer on the Shewa Regional, whatever site he directed us to. And only one of them go back to us saying oh, potentially we might be able to do that. Everyone else was like, ooh, that's out of our jurisdiction. And ooh, that's that's too much. The house is already built since nineteen eighty two. It had a basic suite in it. It's not below ground. It's it's like thirty six inches up the concrete foundation. Space is all over there. I really don't see if I if that red tape were not to get removed, it really doesn't make any sense that I couldn't be legally one of those Vancouver citizens. That it's going to be built illegally. But we don't want to do that. We want to build it with a on it to be done, right?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, and so I I do remember talking to Kenny about that. And yeah, I think the the solution is yeah, working with an engineer to determine if the basement can be used.
Yeah, Scott, can you can you help them out with an engineer that would, you know, be able to make this happen?
Yeah, I know we've had recent recent reports from engineers, so I can see who's who's done those recently.
Yeah, I agree. I know some engineers say you have to apply for something like a various development comment. Which I guess, I don't know if that is an exception to the rule, I suppose.
Yep, that's doable.
Yeah.
If that's been done before, that's
Oh, yeah, quite often. Yeah, all the time.
Yep, not a problem. Great, Liam. Thanks for bringing that to us. And thank you, Scott, for looking. We've been able to look into that for him. Okay, anybody else? Mary, you're back there with your hand up.
Yes. Years ago, the number one highway, I don't know if this has ever been taken into consideration situation. Two years ago, as we know, the number one highway was in front here. And up by the Shell, that was the number one highway. And now the number one highway is right in the dam above it. And I mean, when they had floods, that was that highway was not there. So maybe that should be taken into consideration for the floodplain. I mean, that's that's like a wide lane higher. It's a river that just flowed across the forest. Now it can.
Good comment there, Mary. I think like the highways does protect a part of the community from the from the river overflowing its bank and coming into the community. But it doesn't doesn't do anything for our lake coming into the community. But yeah, no good point.
And the other, the other thing is too, like with secret gardens, lots of good memories of it. It is a night sword. But I kind of like to give credit where credit is deserved. It's putting a young family working year round. And that young fellow is doing a really good job of trying to be rid of the you know, like I see they've got rid of the big containers and it's it's on the right track. No one's leaving.
Yeah, no, I we can appreciate that. And we believe me, we've proud of John and John's, you know, he's told us what he's doing and what his boss wants him to do. And and it's going to come down to something, you know, and we'll probably, I'll probably run him again this week a couple more times. And I told him I'd help him. You know, so but you're right. You know, Shane is employing John and his family and his family's been in the community all those Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, for sure. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else online, Sarah? Nobody else? Okay, well, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Recommend that the committee of the whole meeting of January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three be adjourned at the time of twelve or two seventeen. Have a mover, Bob, Secunder? Pam? All in favor? Very. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.